This is a public service done by the Central Oregon Association of Realtors. We've not had any problems so far. Okay, all right, well, let's get us started now. And Jenna Goodman Campbell and Andrew Davis. Jenna Goodman Campbell, you get us started. Two minutes for opening remarks.
Thank you, Lee. Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here. My name is Jenna Goodman Campbell. I'm running for position five of Mont Ben City Council. I'm so excited to be here with you all today to discuss some of the most important challenges and opportunities facing our community. I'm a third-generation Oregonian, and I spent my career working to bring people together to find common ground and protect what makes Bend special. Ten years ago, I led the campaign to protect the Badlands Wilderness, an effort linking the support of over 200 local businesses, including some of Central Oregon's top employers, as well as the Central Oregon Association of Realtors. That experience shaped me as a leader who understands that when you engage everyone in our community, even if you think that they might not be on the same side as you, we can find common ground and come to solutions that will work for everyone in our community. I'm running for Bend City Council because I'm hired to watch our city get bogged down in divisive arguments about how to address our challenges rather than getting to work. I heard about those challenges again and again two years ago during my campaign for state representative. People told me -- oh, sorry. I knocked on over 4,000 doors during that campaign, and people told me that they want our leaders to help create more options for housing that they can afford. They want to be able to get around town without getting stuck in traffic, and they want options in their communities for businesses that they can safely walk or bike to. And people want our city council to make sure that we are growing wisely and planning for our future, so that we don't destroy the things that we love about Bend. Ever since those conversations, I've had time to think about solutions to our challenges that will work for everyone in our community. I'm excited to talk with you all about some of my ideas today, and I look forward to hearing your perspectives as well. Thank you all for coming, and I hope to earn your vote.
All right, thank you, Jenna. Do you want to pass the mic down? Andrew Davis, two minutes.
This is the only thing that didn't train us on, so we'll see. Got it, all right. I want to take a quick second and thank all of you for coming. I think this is a really incredible and important part of any political process, any process even at this level. I also want to thank the Association of Realtors and KTVZ and Jenna. I just think having an opportunity to have discourse and talk about the things that we're passionate about is really critical. I'm native Bendite. My family's been in Central Oregon for a long time. My great-grandmother was born outside of sisters. My family came to Bend not that long after, and I was 34 years ago born into this community. I had no idea at the time what this community would end up meaning to me. Like many young folks, I grew up worrying about myself and didn't think a lot about community development or the problems that we might be facing or the opportunities that we had to overcome those problems. And graduated from high school and thought to myself, looked around and went, there's not a lot of opportunity for me in this city at this time. I'm going to have to go somewhere, get a degree, go earn a living, and then maybe someday I'll be fortunate and come back. And somewhere along the line, those plans changed, and Bend developed and grew and became a very different place, the place that we all know and love, the things that brought many of us here and have kept many of us here. And that doesn't mean we have a lack of challenges. The thing that concerns me most about our city is what I've come to label the opportunity gap, and that's the gap between household income and household price. It's forcing a lot of folks in Central Oregon out, and a lot of folks in Bend. I work with college students every day, and I see them doing the things that are right, the things we ask them to do, which involve going and earning a degree or certificate. And then they look to the job market and they say, I don't have an opportunity here. So we export a lot of intellectual talent to other communities as a result. And I think there are some really pragmatic, common-sense things that we can do to address that, and I really am looking forward to having an opportunity to talk about those today.
Well, these candidates are on time. Okay, it's time for our first question. And Jenna, we're going to begin with you. If you don't mind, I'll sit down for this so I can read this. Okay, question number one. In the Bend City Council's goals, goal number two reads, move people and products around Bend efficiently, safely, and reliably. What does that mean to you, and what type of transportation infrastructure do you believe best supports this goal?
Very important question, and we have a huge opportunity in front of us with the long-range transportation system plan that the city's currently working on. I'd be really excited to work on that as a councillor. And I believe that that goal means that you can dependently know how long it's going to take you to get from one side of town to another, that you can know that you're going to be able to make it to work on time if you leave a certain time, and that you know you have options for how to get around that are safe and accessible for you. And right now, I think we're not doing too well on a lot of those key points. As I mentioned in my opening statement, a lot of people in town are concerned about increasing traffic. We need to work on having more efficient technology, so that lights are timed and getting people through, and that's something that we can do and start working on immediately. We also need to work on making sure that we have plenty of ways to get from east to west and north to south in our community, so that we're not getting bottlenecks in places like Reed Market and Wilson. So there are some road improvements that need to happen in the longer term. And we also need to make sure that everyone has access to safe options for how to get around town. I consider it a critical failing of our city right now that we are not providing those options for many people in town. When I was knocking on doors in the old farm district out in southeast Bend, I talked to a woman who was really distracted, and she was, you know, not sure if she really could take the time to talk with me when I knocked on her door. So I introduced myself, and I left my materials, and I said, okay, don't worry about it. And she said, oh, wait, hold on, I'm sorry. It's just that my car broke down yesterday, and I don't know how I'm going to get to work tomorrow. I think that's a case for a lot of people living in this community, that if their car breaks down, the mode of transportation that they depend on isn't available to them, and they don't have another way to get where they need to go. So that's something that needs to change, and I would really like to see that addressed in our long-range transportation plan.
Very good. Andrew?
Will you mind repeating that, because I think there were sort of these two parts?
In the Bend City Council's goals, goal number two reads, move people and products around Bend efficiently, safely, and reliably. What does that mean to you, and what type of transportation infrastructure do you believe best supports this goal?
Great question. Bend is a really unique community in that we have a lot of people that really love to drive their vehicles. I mean, I think when I read the transportation system plan, 78% of people still single-vehicle rides every day. And I think for me, when I approach this question, that becomes a really critical factor in considering, because we have a lot of folks who are going to drive their cars, and we have a lot of really good reasons for that. We have inclement weather, we have geographic challenges. I can't imagine saying to someone on Aubrey View, how do you ride your bike up and down every day? That would be an interesting idea, but I think that a lot of folks would push back on that. So for me, when I approach that question and look at that data, which is really important to me when I make decisions, is looking at that information and saying, okay, the vast majority of our people are driving their vehicles, and they want to continue to drive their vehicles, so let's focus our infrastructure development on supporting that and simultaneously doing what we can at the same time to make sure that people who want to walk have safe walkways, have sidewalks that are adequate on their roads, people who want to ride their bikes. I have a dear friend, I love him to death, he will bike in two feet of snow. We need to make sure that he can get to and from places safely as we're developing those roads. So I think that's a huge piece, and then certainly we want to take a look at our mass transit system. Right now, we have a chicken-and-egg type problem, in my opinion, where we need increased ridership to support increased services, and we need increased services to support increased ridership. And so I think we need to huddle up and figure out what's an efficient way to look at that. Are there public-private partnerships that we can focus on? I think that that's something that the city has just said we're going to support, and I think that would be really critical for us moving forward, is to look at creative solutions like Mass Transit Uber. I think that's a really developing area, and I think we really need to pay attention to that, be talking to those organizations, and also to folks to say, will this meet your needs?
All right, thank you. Okay, Jenna, you have one minute for rebuttal on that question.
Great, thank you. So I agree that most people in Bend currently depend on their automobile and, you know, driving alone to get where they need to go. But we are required by the state to look at ways that we can reduce vehicle miles traveled in this upcoming transportation plan, and I think that's something that can be really beneficial for everyone in our community. It's not looking at how you can reduce the amount of people driving, although that would also reduce vehicle miles traveled. It's looking at how you can help people have shorter trips to where they need to go, so they're spending less time in their car and less time stuck in traffic. And that means there's less cars on the road. And so we need to be looking at solutions that, yes, help get people out of their cars when that's a good option for them to get where they need to go, but also on how we can reduce vehicle miles traveled. So this goes hand in hand for me with making sure that we're developing more complete communities where people have options in their neighborhood that they can walk or bike to get to local business, to get their kids to school, and maybe even to get to work. So for me, that's the ideal we should be striving for.
All right, Andrew, one minute.
I didn't realize I got a rebut to a rebut. Sorry.
The golden minute of whatever.
I agree, actually. I think that creating spaces that are integrated where people can choose to travel less, if that's their desire, is really, really important. The thing that's, to me, I just keep coming back to is people have the ability to make choices, and they're going to make those choices. And so in some ways, we do what we can to provide opportunities for people to take alternative transportation modes, and then we have to also make sure that we're supporting the models that they're using. And so for me, it just really comes down to a balance and really making sure that we're looking at that and saying, okay, here's what we can do to incentivize other ways for people to put less miles on, decrease traffic, and if folks are continuing to use their cars, making sure that those roads are supported, they're well-developed, and that they work for bikes and pedestrians at the same time.
Okay, hold on to the microphone. You get to lead off on this one. Question number two. The city of Bend is now in the implementation phase of its UGB expansion. With continual growth projected for Bend, this is obviously not the last time Bend will be talking about the UGB. What steps are the shitty --
You have money. I can do it too if you want, ladies.
You don't have that audio rolling back.
I'm going to need a copy of this tape.
What steps should the city be taking now to plan for further growth?
We're still, we're not talking about subject to sewer? Just Jenna?
Always a comedian.
You all will get that in a minute. You'll get it in a minute. Don't worry. In terms of what steps we should be taking now, I'm a strong proponent that we need to figure out and implement a plan to annex the current UGB right now. Bend has a problem with inadequate supply of land, buildable for both residential use and mixed-use commercial, light industrial. We've got a twofold problem, in my opinion, and that problem is that because we don't have those supplies of land, we aren't building homes as fast as we need to, and we also aren't able to attract industry here to provide jobs that pay higher median wages as fast as we need to. And for me, both sides of that really, really matter. And so phase one is annex that land and do it quickly. And then phase two, we start on the next iteration of the UGB and start on it right now, because it's not a quick process, it's not an easy process. Those who have some familiarity with the last time the city did this, we spent a few years working on it, we sent it to the state, and the state sent it back to us and said, nope, try again. And so we don't want to be in that situation a second time. We want to get out ahead of it, figure out where we can grow and how we can grow strategically. With land, it'll work to get ahead of the growth that's in Bend, because the growth is coming, and we can't stop it, and I don't think we would want to, in my opinion. I think people are coming here for all the reasons that brought us here, and a part of being an inclusive community is recognizing that. With that said, we need a plan to make sure that we have an adequate supply of that. For me, it comes down to basic economics. If we can build homes quickly enough, we can help costs from scaling out of control. And if we can work with industry to come here to build or to bring business, that's good for our economy. Folks can go to work, we can give them wages that correlate to the experience and education that they have, and then they'll be able to afford homes at favorite price points.
All right, thank you. Jenna?
Well, I agree that we need to be building more homes quickly and looking into the future, but as you said, Andrew, our last urban growth boundary proposal took two tries, and the first try was rejected because we had tried to expand too far, and that wasted a lot of time. So I think first, we need to fulfill our commitments currently with the urban growth boundary that we are just getting underway with implementing. We have a lot of exciting opportunities to build vibrant new communities like in Bend Central District and Corpine Area and the Southeast Elbow. We have a lot of opportunities in front of us, and really, we need to focus on making the most efficient use of the land that we have within our city before we start thinking again about how we grow. I really don't think we can afford more sprawl, especially when we're having trouble maintaining the roads and infrastructure we already have. And additionally, I think people moved to Bend, like many of you here in this room, to be able to access the outdoors quickly and to have that right out on our doorstep. So, you know, we're not Colorado, we're not Montana, definitely not California, we're not going to be, you know, expanding out and out into our public lands and our open spaces and farmland. And so, you know, I want to see us making the best, wisest use of the land that we have, with high-quality development here in town. That being said, we also do have a responsibility to look at our land supply long-term and make sure that we are having a supply that's sufficient to meet demand for the next 20 years. And so I will insist that city staff frequently be going back and looking at our inventory of available land and making sure that we do have an adequate supply to meet the demand that we have, so that we don't get caught in the spine again of home prices skyrocketing because we haven't kept up with our land supply.
All right, thank you.
For me, a piece that's also critical to this is just recognizing what the makeup of Bend is, and certainly, we need to be looking at pockets of our land and considering more dense housing. I think that makes sense. There are certainly people who want that. For me, we need more streams of homes. We have, and Bend looks, I think, pretty good at building three-bed, two-bath, 2,000-square-foot homes. It's easy to look around and see those, and those circle places in our community. I think we need a healthier mix, though, and that would include townhomes, changing our regulations and working on things like ADUs, making that really an affordable option for people, multifamily housing. I think for us, we need all of those streams, and for that, a big piece is making sure that we have that land available to us. It can't just be looking at only the pockets that we have within the city limits. We're going to have to look at that annexed land and also the next iteration of UGB.
I definitely agree on all of that, and I agree that we want to be building a greater mix of land. And so I think it's really more about focus. You know, my focus immediately is going to be on making sure that we're building more different types of homes to meet that market demand that we have for a wider variety of housing that is affordable to people who work here. Right now, we're currently lacking thousands of units that are affordable to people making around the median income and below. We actually do have over 2,000 houses available at any given time that are affordable to somebody making more in the neighborhood of $150,000. So that's not accessible for a lot of families here in Bend, and we want to make homeownership more attainable for people. So in order to do that, we need to focus on jump-starting construction of homes in the land that we have available and fulfilling our commitments that we made in our urban growth boundary proposal.
All right, thank you. Ready for question number three? We'll begin with you, Jenna. Oregon state law requires homeowners currently using a septic system and living within 300 feet of the city sewer infrastructure to connect to the city sewer system if their existing septic system fails. The completion of the city's Southeast Interceptor, SEI, is one factor that has triggered the 300-foot rule for some Bend properties, leaving some homeowners potentially facing significant costs to connect to the city sewer. The city's currently working to develop a plan to assist homeowners financially who are required to connect, but to make no decision has been made. What do you think the city's responsibility is in addressing this issue, and what funding mechanism would you recommend?
I definitely think that it is the city's responsibility to decide how to help people connect up to the sewer line. This is a really tricky issue, and I'm glad to see that the city has a citizen committee of people living in the area who are going to need to connect from subject to sewer and who will be impacted by this, helping to find ways to figure out how we're going to pay for this and how it's going to happen. I think it's really important that people who are being impacted are involved in this process. So in terms of how it should be funded, I think that the city is right, as they're currently looking at providing a balanced mix of some funding coming from the city, some funding coming from all of us as ratepayers, and some funding coming from local improvement districts in the neighborhoods that are going to be connected up to sewer. The main point that I want to make sure to make that's important is that people not lose their homes because of this, and that people not have to sacrifice, you know, their daily needs in order to pay to connect up to sewer. We have a lot of people living in these areas who are lower income, are seniors on a fixed income, and so it's critical that those folks have support in hooking up to sewer. I personally would be in favor of a small fee that everybody, all utility payers could pay into provided funds to help people who aren't able to afford the cost of connecting up to sewer. I think we all pay for things on our taxes that we don't necessarily use. I know I have a friend who herself is on septic, and she says, oh, yeah, I pay my stormwater fee, and we don't use that. So I think it would be fair that the majority of people in Bend would be willing to pay just a little bit to help people who are not able to afford to hook up to that there.
I imagine this might be an issue where Jenna and I are going to be very, very similar in our answers. I went to one of the listening sessions that the city held about a month ago, about wanting to hear firsthand from folks who were being affected by this issue. How is it impacting your life? And the thing that I walked away with was a very clear understanding that people are scared, people are reduced, fears are real, and I think that as good neighbors and good citizens of one city, we need to really be paying attention to that. So that told me right off the bat, we don't have the solution yet. The $25,000 is not the right number, and the $250 a month is not the right number, because to someone who is retired and only drawing social security, that number might as well be a million dollars. And I know that there are some safety nets that we've talked about in terms of support systems to help folks that are in those situations, but it doesn't matter, because they're still very concerned and frightened by those numbers. And so I'm a proponent of two things. The first that I would do is go back and see if there's a way we can work, the city can come up with some of its own funding to extend the lines farther and maybe meet people in the middle to drive that $25,000 number down, and then also work to see what other financing options we might have for folks, so that that $250 a month can come way, way down, so that we can get to a place where people aren't lying awake at night or considering selling their homes and leaving our community. In lieu of that, if that is not possible, then I am personally also a proponent of saying to every ratepayer in the city, you know what, let's all pay a couple bucks, because our neighbors are going to suffer unduly. I think we should have solved this problem 20 years ago, and we didn't, but that's the reality of our situation. So we have to be strategic thinkers today and say, what works to make our community function? And then with the areas that we continue to annex, let's make sure that we don't make this mistake again and not plan for that infrastructure development in the next go-around.
Completely agree on the last thing you said, that, you know, it's critically important that we're really thoughtful about how we're growing. Personal story, I own my own home, and several years ago, my neighbors were digging the foundation for their garage, and they hit my sewer line. And my lot was subdivided before I purchased it in 2004, 2005, during the HDA development. And so they hit my sewer line, which meant that my sewer line was on their property. And somebody in the city looked the other way when they were subdividing my property and did not require them to move the sewer line onto my property. And so, you know, that was one of those moments as a homeowner where I had to pay to have the sewer line moved, and I had to pay the city for the permits to move my sewer line. And it was very frustrating for me as a homeowner that we hadn't been more thoughtful and careful as we grew in the past, and so that's just something that I want to make sure we're doing today. If there's any way to go back and help these people who were in this unfortunate situation, then I'm definitely a favor of that.
I can probably save us a minute and not rebut the rebut upon which we agree.
All right. Well, just hold on to the mic, then we'll go to question number four. What does smart growth mean to you?
That's a great question. To me, smart growth has to do with strategic planning. Smart growth has to do with looking into the future and doing a couple of different things, both of which I believe are equally important. One is deciding what kind of city do we want to become, and I don't know that Bend has ever substantively answered that question. I think Bend went from small town to mid-sized large city very, very quickly. That's how I feel, having been born and raised here. I went from the '80s, where a genuine woodmill was still in operation, to today, where we're a more thriving economy and a lot of tourism. And we boomed, and I don't think that our planning and our thinking ever caught up to that quite in the way it should have. So for me, it comes down to answering that question, and then from there, it's charting out a course to achieve those things. Bend, people love Bend. I doubt any of us in this room would disagree with that. I know I certainly would disagree with it. People are going to be coming here, and so for me, it involves taking what data we have, how many people are moving here, where are they coming from, what are they moving here to accomplish? Are they retired? Are they moving here to go to one of our college or our university? Are they coming here to go to work or to open a small business? And planning accordingly. So that means making sure that we are ready for those folks in terms of infrastructure development, places for them to live, things for them to do in their spare time, and making sure that all the great things that make a city function are ready for them and not getting caught off guard. I think one of the things that Bend has been challenged with over the years is sort of a boom-and-bust cycle, and we need to do what we can to make our economy have smaller booms, not smaller booms, but even out the disparity between the boom and bust, be ready and get ahead of that curve, rather than go, oh, my gosh, we have a problem, and now we need to react to it, which I think is easy to do in a small community and hard work, but necessary work in a larger community.
So for me, smart growth means protecting what we love about Bend, even though we're going to continue to grow, but also growing in a way that we are actually improving quality of life and proving things for people in our community over what we have today. A big way that I see that we can do that with the current urban growth boundary is through what I've mentioned before, with complete communities, looking at neighborhoods, big picture, and seeing what are people lacking in this neighborhood that is causing them to have to drive across town, for example, to get it? Are they lacking a grocery store? Can the population support a grocery store? Are they lacking, you know, restaurants or schools or parks? And making sure that everybody has access to those types of amenities and services in their community, so that if they want to, they can walk to the store with their kids, they can walk to work or drive a short distance to work. So that, I think, is one key part of smart growth. Another part is cost-conservative growth. We all know that infrastructure is really expensive, and so the more efficient, wise use that we're making of our land, and the more that we're focusing development in the central part of our community around infrastructure that's already existing, that can be upgraded, the more we'll be able to build housing that people can afford, and the more solid our city budget will be in the long term. We see a lot in a lot of communities where, you know, you build way out, you sprawl, and then we have roads that are built, sewer pipe, more water line, and all of that has to be maintained. And by law, system development charities in Oregon aren't allowed to be, aren't allowed to factor in the maintenance of our infrastructure. So it's really important that as we grow and build out and build more infrastructure, we know that we're going to be able to shoulder the expense of maintaining that into the future. It's something that's critically important that I don't think we've done a good job of in the past, and it's why we're stuck in, part of why we're stuck in the situation we are today with really having trouble finding enough money to maintain our roads and other infrastructure that we have.
One other piece that I would add in terms of smart growth has to do with listening to people in the community. I think that's a really critical piece of growing, is recognizing, hey, it's going to happen, and going out to groups in our community, neighborhood associations, individual neighborhoods, community interest groups, and saying to those folks, here's what we know is coming, how would you like to see this happen? What can we do to get out ahead of that and to help preserve the things in our community that people really care about while also accommodating the changes that are necessary? Change is inevitably something that makes most of us uncomfortable, and I think that it's really good for us to recognize that as a city and to acknowledge it and to talk about it. One of the unique challenges that Bend has is that there are a lot of people who have been here for quite some time, and obviously, a lot of people who have come here from somewhere else around the country, and those ideals don't always match. So we need to get those people talking, so that people who've been here don't feel disenfranchised, and people who come here are still a part of our community.
Yes, change is scary, but, you know, I think we're at the point as a community where smart growth for us means that we are going to change. I have spent my career engaging I have spent my career engaging people who often I don't agree with and finding surprising common ground. So I would be excited as your city councillor to, to engage with neighborhood associations, with people in areas across Bend and make sure that, that the way we're growing fits with, you know, fits with their vision of our future, but also fits with the needs of our growing community. Talking about employment, you know, I think we have a major problem right now with employers who are locating here and industries that we want to attract more businesses from not being able to attract employees because we don't have housing, you know, on stock that, that meets people's needs. And we need more variety of housing and in order to do that, we're going to need to make some big changes. And I think we can focus those changes in places like the Bend Central District, which I'm really excited about as an opportunity to create a more vibrant central part of our town.
All right. Final question. We give to Jenna. What differentiates you from your opponent and what do you think is the most important distinction for voters to know?
What differentiates me from, from Andrew is, you know, actually we're, we're exactly the same age, but, but I've had this experience two years ago of running for state representative. And I ran against an incumbent who was well-known and had a lot of money. And so I know, I knew I needed to make up for that through working really hard. And the way I did that was, as I said, knocking on over 4,000 doors in every neighborhood in Bend. So that was an experience that really shaped my priorities for our city and is what led me to decide I wanted to run for city council because the issues that I heard about from people on the doors were affordable housing, smart growth, and transportation. We need a, a transportation system that's more efficient and works better for everybody. And so with that experience, I, as I said, I've had the time to think about specific solutions and I've done a lot of research into finding out what our city is currently doing and what else we could be doing in order to address those challenges. On affordable housing, as I said, we need to, we need to create more housing options so that we're bringing our housing supply into balance with what people here in Bend need. On transportation, we need to be looking far out to the future and making sure that we're growing wisely and taking into account, you know, how people, that people have access to safe options for getting around. And on growth, you know, I, I lived with the Badlands, I'll make sure that we're bringing people together and protecting what makes that special.
I think one of the things that separates Jenna and I is I have a little bit longer view on Bend's history. I haven't been born and raised here and I think that gives me a fairly unique perspective because I've seen it not just in the boom, but I've seen it through this last, you know, great recession, which I know she did also, but I saw it even prior to that where it was a, a smaller community with sort of different needs and sort of this best kept secret, if you will, where before people really got out the word that, hey, Bend's a cool place and you can ski and work there and let's, let's get over there. That provides me, I think, somewhat of a unique perspective on what people are talking about across a wide variety of, of perspectives. And in terms of my career, I've spent most of the last 10 years working with college students and hearing their perspectives and their passions and recognizing, okay, here's what we're trying to do, here's what we want to do not only for ourselves, but for our town. And I think along with working with those college students comes having to work with people who have an incredibly diverse number of viewpoints and getting them all to talk about their values, not just their ideas, and come to a common solution. And I think that gives me a pretty unique skillset in terms of city council to be able to have worked in, with all those groups and been a strategic thinker, but also have to be really pragmatic and get folks to a point where we can go, okay, what's our, what's our decision point? Because I think that that's really critical for city leadership is to be able to say, okay, here's where we need to go, here's how we need to get there and, and we've got to really take these steps to be efficient, to be impactful, and to get ourselves towards getting some things accomplished.
Well, as Andrew said, I, I've been here for 12 years, so I actually moved here right, right when we were at the peak of our development. So I see that as real, a real cautionary tale for us of, of making sure that we are, that we're growing wisely and we're playing for our future and we're not getting overly dependent on one sector of our economy. I, my, my husband and I just welcomed our first child in March and so I know what it's like to wonder if my, if my family will be able to afford to stay here in the future. And that's an experience that's shared by far too many people here in Bend and it's something that needs to change. So I've been thinking for several years about solutions to challenges like affordable housing and I'm prepared to work hard as your councillor to implement those solutions.
I don't, I don't know a whole lot else that I can say to convince you that we're different. We're obviously different. I think that's a good thing and voters have a tough choice to make in terms of who they believe is ready to represent them and to represent what they think Bend needs to become. One thing that is, is a little bit different about us is that I have never run for political office. So for me, this is all about having looked at our city, having listened to people, having knocked on a lot of doors in the last month and heard people talk about what matters to them, but also saying this is something that, that for me is a chance to engage in civic service without any experience, other than having been involved in a neighborhood association, which was an amazing experience and I got an intro, a little bit of a taste of what this is like and what people care about. But I think we're both excited and ready to do this, so I actually don't envy you.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes your question. Now we have time for closing. Please hold your applause. We're going to have closing arguments now. So as we went with the coin flip, it's your turn to begin.
Oh, it's my turn?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I just want to, I want to take one more second and just say thank you all again to you all for coming out today. I think, as I said before, this is a critical part of our process and you, you have a tough choice in a few weeks in terms of what matters to you for city development, what matters to you in terms of approach. I, I don't think I can overstate enough, for me, the, the single greatest issue facing our city has to do with this opportunity gap. The gap between these wages and household costs is, it's scary. It's frightening people. It's really scaring folks who are coming out of colleges and universities because they don't know if they're going to be able to afford to live here. And it's something that we have to do to address it. One of the things that several people have said to me over the past months is, can we even do anything about it? And I respond to them always with absolutely, there's, there are things that we can do about it because if we don't start planning now and implementing policies and practices in 10 years, it's going to be much worse. And for me, the mark of success would be if my three boys get to the age where they're choosing where they want to live and, and raise their families, that they could choose Bend. And I can say pretty unequivocally right now that if left unchecked, they would not be able to choose Bend outside of winning the lottery or some major other financial windfall. So this is something that's very personal to me and very concerning because I've been very blessed to be, be a part of this community for so long and to have benefited from unfortunately the downturn in the economy, but I don't want us to be dependent upon that kind of downturn in the economy for people to be able to stay here. We need to be able to get out ahead of this problem, put policies and practices into place to where folks can stay here and be successful.
Well, I appreciate your response to, to somebody saying that this is impossible because I think we'd never be sitting here if we thought that the change was impossible. So thank you all again for coming here today, taking time out of your schedules to participate in this thoughtful discussion about some of the challenges and opportunities that we face as a community. I hope that one of your main takeaways from today's debate is this. As your future city councillor, I am committed to listening to everyone's concerns and finding common ground so that we can get to work on implementing solutions for our community. On affordable housing, I will work to enact creative policies that make homeownership more attainable for people working in Bend. I'll work with developers, businesses, and other government agencies to make sure that more houses are being built and that these new homes are affordable for people making immediate income. I will work with people in real estate to understand how housing, how our housing market can meet the needs of people living in Bend. And on transportation, I'm committed to addressing the big problems that we have today while envisioning a future where everyone has access to safe options for getting where they need to go. And also I will assist that the voters understand exactly how their tax dollars will be, will be spent when we're asking people to commit to funding new transportation projects so that they understand how the money that they're investing will improve their daily commute. Finally, as I did with the Badlands, I will work to protect Bend's quality of life and our healthy environment so that we continue to be the thriving community tomorrow that we are today. Please vote for me so that we can build a better future for all of Bend. Thank you.
Okay. This is position number six and we're going to begin with Barb Campbell. Opening statement, two minutes, Barb.
All right. Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Thanks to Central Oregon Realtors for hosting this event in particular. Thanks for making it a free event that is open to the entire community. The most important thing I think that any of us can do as candidates or elected officials is to honestly try and reach out to citizens, reach out to voters, have conversations, not just throw bullet points at them, you know? So, thank you for being here. Thanks for giving us this time. I currently serve on the Bend City Council. My name is Barb Campbell. I am approaching the end of my first term and I'm hoping to earn your vote for reelection this time. I own a little retail store downtown. I own Lobby Savi where we sell cool Japanese stuff. And before that, I was an eighth grade science teacher. And before that, when I first moved to town, 27 years ago, I was a carpenter by day and cocktail waitress by night. I worked on, in a restaurant when I was in college. Most of my life honestly has been in sales of some type. Even teaching, when you think about it, you're trying to sell kids on the idea of doing their homework. You're trying to market science to them in a way that they can understand it and remember it. And Realtors are salespeople. Realtors are selling homes and people need homes. And there is absolutely nothing bad about that. They are, they are simply a force in our market. But that force, those salespeople are on commission. And I've also been a, a commissioned salesperson. That's a waitress. That's the person who is always going to say to you, would you like to have dessert with that? Because they want you to have a bill that is higher because their own paycheck depends on that. There is nothing wrong with Realtors. I'm happy to listen. I'm happy to talk, but I want to be on the voice for the people who are buying the homes and are trying to find affordable homes and are trying to find small homes that are actually what they want, not being sold a bigger product. Thank you.
Sarah, two minutes.
All right. Hello there. I am Sarah McCormick. I'm a fifth, fifth generation Oregonian. My family has had property in Deschutes County since the seventies and they now own the Pine Tavern Restaurant. I've seen how small business is affected by the rules set by the city. I'm the mother of two boys and that's why I'm running. I want to see Bend remain a safe place to raise my kids and part of that is going to be addressing the homeless population and how they're becoming more and more aggressive. I want my boys to be able to afford to come back here when they're older. I'm worried about the housing crisis that we're in right now and families like mine being able to afford to live here and move here. I've, I've got a lot to learn. I'm new to the area. I've been here four years and I've really had a good time meeting different business owners and people in the community. I'm not very distracted by national politics and it's really easy to get distracted by national politics because it's a zoo. I mean, it's constant drama. And my opponent is very into national politics and recently walked out on a city council meeting and I don't plan on doing anything like that. I will not walk out on the citizens of Bend. I won't walk out on the city of Bend.
All right. Ready for question number one? Infrastructure is an important component of city operations and especially critical for a growing city like Bend. If elected, what infrastructure projects would you prioritize for the city?
Do I go first? Great. Thank you so much. You've already seen a difference between my opponent and myself. I don't think it's possible to be distracted by national politics. I think all politics is local. On the issue of infrastructure, we right now are suffering from tariffs on steel. We're trying to build an overcrossing over Murf, on Murphy Road. We are trying to get the first, finally, way to get over the railroad tracks on the east side of our city. Well, an overcrossing is a bridge and bridges are made out of steel. And the price of steel just went up by 25%. So I would just disagree with anyone who thinks that's a distraction. I think that is absolutely an issue that affects our own local politics and I always try to keep those two things separate. My opponent is absolutely right when she says she has a lot to learn. I have never walked out of a city council meeting. There's a journalist in the room who knows that that's the truth. I'm happy to show my attendance record against anyone else's. I've attended more meetings than most anybody except for Justin, who's there in the back. He's got an excellent record too. Infrastructure, that Murphy overcrossing, I just think that's essential to get people over the railroad tracks. After that, it isn't. That sewer project, how are we going to connect those people? They are worried. They are terrified. But the reason they're terrified is because they've heard what a bad job Eugene did. They've heard what a bad job Portland did. They heard that those cities understand that the cities just don't have any responsibility legally. We don't. The city of Bend, we ourselves in the last three years have, because we understand that 2,2800 homes, we can't have that many people losing their homes. We have to help them. Thanks.
All right.
Do you mind repeating the question?
Not at all. Infrastructure is an important component of city operations and especially critical for a growing city like Bend. If elected, what infrastructure projects would you prioritize for the city?
Okay, so, from what I understand, there used to be an infrastructure advisory committee and it is no longer around. And I would like to see that get up and running again because over the next 10 years, Bend is going to be spending around $500 million on infrastructure. It's especially expensive here because we are on the salt and it costs a lot to put pipes in the ground. It's $800 a foot. And part of that is going to be paying, I've paid for it. And who puts the bill? Is it the ratepayers? Is it going to be developers? And I think it's going to have to be a, a joint effort for all of us to pay for it together and move forward.
All right. One minute, Barb.
The infrastructure advisory committee was tasked specifically with the water project and once that water project was finished, they just didn't have any work to do. That committee included people who were supposed to be, the idea of the committee was that they were supposed to be experts on sewer and water and transportation. And that was the part that got us on city council deciding that that commission just wasn't right. There's, that person isn't out there that is an expert on sewer and transportation. Those are very different subjects. So we are on track to putting back a commission that maybe would be sewer and water, if that makes sense to me, at least they're built pipes. And then I also, we all on council now, I think, agree that yes, we need a new transportation committee, commission that runs through time as well. We have not established that right now because we have a large citywide transportation commission working temporarily right now.
All right. Thank you. One minute for Sarah.
Of course. Thank you. So the, that advisory committee saved the city $54 million in the water project. So I think that, that being said, it should, we should prioritize having outside influences like a committee to, I mean, I'm no expert in drilling or, and most of the infrastructure projects coming down the chute. And I don't think that very many people on city council know what they're talking about when it comes to actually putting in pipes in the ground and getting and getting electricity out to all these places. So having an advisory committee is absolutely essential and for the growth in the next ten years.
All right, thank you. Hold on to the mics. There, you go next. Question number two.
Wait, we're almost halfway through, I think.
Opposition from neighbors is not uncommon when affordable housing projects are proposed within the city. In the midst of an affordable housing crisis, how can Bend support neighborhoods while also increasing the supply of affordable housing?
I think that to increase the supply of affordable housing, we have to start annexing the land that was just brought into the UGV. Because if we get more housing, then we will be able to keep up with supply and demand and keep the home prices down. These are way better options than, say, rent control and inclusionary zoning, because there have been academic studies that prove that those two things actually do not help with people who need affordable housing.
That it? Okay. Same question, Barb.
Would you mind bringing anyone in? I'm sorry.
Opposition from neighbors is not uncommon when affordable housing projects are proposed within the city. In the midst of an affordable housing crisis, how can Bend support neighborhoods while also increasing the supply of affordable housing?
Though, this is like in my perfect world. I would get all of those neighbors on a nice tour bus where they have drinks and snacks, and we would drive around the town exactly like we city councillors do, and we would look at the affordable housing products...projects we have already built. Right now, it's an affordable housing with a capital A, which means subsidized, which means it's deed restricted. It can only be rented or sold to someone of a restricted income. And I myself just have to say I was surprised. I think most of our citizens would be surprised to find out that they are probably already living near a project, maybe of apartments, a small apartment project. What else do we have? Habitat for Humanity homes that are around in our neighborhoods. They're already there, and we've done a remarkable job of making those types of housing fit into the neighborhoods. You can't tell the difference. You can't tell the difference between our apartments that are government subsidized for, you know, frankly, poor people, and the apartments just a block away that are market rate. You see the differences inside. You see the differences in linoleum floors instead of carpets. You see the difference in, you know, the bathroom sink fixtures are not fancy, but they fit into the neighborhoods. I think a lot of it is really just educating people about the smart ways to grow a city, and it does have to do with not repeating mistakes of the past. The biggest mistake of the past was thinking that we're gonna put all of the poor people in some giant apart...you know, we don't even wanna use the word "projects," because that word "projects" immediately brings to mind a thing that is almost destined to go bad. But little apartments, single-family homes, duplexes, those can fit in without you, even knowing they're there.
So, oh, can I just go?
Yeah.
So I guess I disagree. It's not a difference of linoleum floors or tile. Though you can't see it driving down the street, the developers are deal...already dealing with really fine margins, and it makes...by enforcing that there has to be affordable housing, it makes it not as appealing for the developers to be here, and a lot of them have been moving to other towns that are more lucrative on the outskirts of Bend. And so I guess I disagree that you can see that there is a price to be paid for putting in low-income housing.
All right. Barb, one minute.
There's, just that phrase, "there's a price to be paid for putting in low-income housing." There's a price to be paid for taking care of a homeless veteran. There's a price to be paid for taking care of a child who's born with a disability. That's what we do with our society, is we decide that we're all gonna live together, and we're gonna pay those prices, but we're gonna pay them together. We're gonna spread them out so that it isn't so burdensome on any single individuals that they can't stay. So that it isn't so burdensome on those young families who are also trying to just stay in town, because they are. Homeless veterans are just trying to make it here. They've come back to their home. And at the same time, the young children of all of these other candidates here are hoping that they're going to be able to stay. We've gotta have all of those voices at the table. They all deserve to be heard and represented.
All right, thank you. Question number three, Barb. You get to start on this one, and I hope you're paying attention to the position number five debate, because same question on septic to sewer. Oregon state law requires homeowners currently using a septic system and living within three hundred feet of the city sewer infrastructure to connect to the city sewer system if their existing septic system fails. The completion of the city's Southeast Interceptor, SEI, is one factor that has triggered the three-hundred-foot rule for some Bend properties, leaving some homeowners potentially facing significant costs to connect to city sewer. City is currently working to develop a plan to assist homeowners financially who are required to connect, but to date, no decision has been made. What do you think the city's responsibility is in addressing this issue, and what funding mechanism would you recommend?
As I mentioned earlier, the city frankly just has no legal responsibility, according to the state, according to the DEQ. We, the current city council, have chosen to take on this responsibility. I have described this problem like a hurricane hit our city. When you do the math, it's nearly ten percent of our single-family homes. This would be an economic disaster for our town. This would be a disaster for, not just for those individuals. So we have decided to try and do what we can to help. The first thing we did was put in an interim policy, because there are already people up against that three-hundred-foot rule. There are already people whose systems have failed, and the state and the county are telling them that they cannot repair their system. That's the answer they would have heard unless we had put that interim policy in place. So we started by doing that, just so those people have, you know, reassurance that right now they're okay. It seems to me that we have all agreed that, yes, this is another of those costs that the whole society takes care of. We just have to decide what is the appropriate amount. The simple fact is, those homes will be getting a home improvement, being on septic. My homes...you know, my home is on sewer, and I can tell you, in nearly three years, I had one bill, and that was to the Roto Ritter Company, and it was for a few hundred dollars, you know? It wasn't for thousands. So these folks are getting a home improvement, and we're trying to decide what's that worth. And that's one of the ways we came to that number of twenty-five thousand dollars, because that's what about what it costs to replace a septic. The problem is, we have not yet to where their total cost might be twenty-five thousand. And Andrew is exactly right. For some people, the answer is zero. Some people cannot afford a thing, and that's where that safety net comes in. So I'm working on what is the fair cost for everyone? What's the fair share for the whole community? And where is that safety net for people who honestly can't afford anything?
Okay, so this issue, if my husband and I were faced with this issue, we would be...we would be screwed. I know that's not the best way to put it, but we would be. And I think that the city needs to get back to the drawing board. This cannot be the answer to charge each household to be hooked up twenty-five thousand dollars. A lot of these folks are on fixed incomes, and it just...they'll be run out of town. They will not be able to keep their homes. And it's my understanding that this was presented in the nineties. They knew this problem was coming, and no money was set aside. So I think that the...it is a little bit on the city that it's our responsibility to take care of these people, because we didn't plan for this when we could have. I've also, you know, I've read a lot about what some other states are doing. We're so lucky to live in a day and age where we can research what other towns are doing. And in Washington State, they have a revolving fund, and I think we could do something with that. There are...there are a lot of other options that I just think that we should consider before we slap everybody with a twenty-five thousand dollar bill.
Okay, one minute, Barb.
The proposal that city council is currently looking at came from the citizens, came from a citizen committee. It was almost entirely made up of people who are affected. So that twenty-five thousand dollar number came from the citizens themselves. No one has decided on that. At the one point, I really wanna make sure that we all understand, and it was something that Jenna's opponent said, and what he said is, the city needs to find its own funding. And I just think everyone in this room needs to understand, there is no such thing. The city does not have its own funding. Every penny the city got, they got from you. The only funding the city has that they...that you might think they didn't get from you is from tourists. We get some tourist room tax. All of the rest of it, it is either your Deschutes County property tax bill. It is your state tax bill. It is your federal tax bill. All of this money is your money. So the question is, how do we...again, it's the equity. How do we split it? How do we share the costs? That's what's taking the time. That's what we're working on figuring out.
All right, Sarah, you begin with this one. Question number four. The Bend City Council has created a citywide transportation advisory committee to provide recommendations related to the updates of the transportation system plan and metropolitan transportation plan, as well as policy and funding recommendations. What outcomes and recommendations would you like to see from this committee? And, yes, that's it. What would you like to see from this committee process?
Well, I think we've got to work with the roads we have. A lot of us are...I would guess that most everybody in this room drove here today, and I'm in support of all of the...all of the road improvements that they're trying to make for more capacity. Nobody likes traffic, but in comparison to other towns, our traffic issues aren't terrible right now. I...yeah, I would just say, let's take care of the roads we have.
All right, Barb, same question to you.
Um, wait, I agree very much with my opponent there today. We simply...the problems that give us the spots, that give us the worst problems, we just...they're there. It's those underpasses on Newport and on Galveston. It's the river. It's the railroad tracks. And so when my opponent says we have got to work with the system we have, she is absolutely right. So many of these important thoroughfares, they really, they are what we are, and we've got to figure out, how are we going to build capacity within the system that we have? Well, I happen to think that we really are. We're at a turning point here in transportation because of technology. There's a new signal near my house, and if you don't live in my neighborhood, you might not even notice it's a new signal, because it looks the same. But wow, do I notice. I can get through on a left turn now. People are not cutting in front of my sister-in-law's house, because that signal allows people to make those left turns. It's allowing an additional two, three cars every single time. Well, the ones that are even smarter than that signal, oh, they can adjust in real time to the traffic that's on the road. The other technology we've got are phones, some of these little devices that help us navigate. Oh, they'll just tell you, "Don't drive Eighth Street today. Get over onto Third. There's an accident on Eighth." That's how we're gonna build more capacity within the streets that we have. The other thing is, we stick to our urban growth plan. Most of my family still lives in Colorado, and I go out to visit a couple times a year. And every time I go, I come back more and more sure that the resource we protect here in eastern Oregon is our tax money. That's the resource we're protecting by not sprawling. When you go out to Colorado, every single purchase you make, there's eight percent on there, and I think it's going to their roads. We've got to stay small and follow the UGV plan.
One minute, Sarah.
So I wanna talk a little bit about, Barb had mentioned technology, and we are in a really awesome time where we can utilize technology, and I'm really excited about the idea of having Uber subsidized in replace of the bus system. It's not only good for our taxpayer dollars, because having the buses and system cost so much money, but it's also really good for the environment. A bus pumps out eight times as many emissions as a car, and I get...I think that the regular riders was around twenty-one persons a day, which is not enough to sustain a bus system. And I know that my opponent will disagree with me, and it's partially because she is part of the protest with the bus union people. And so...
All right, one minute, Barb.
Uber has a system...Uber and Lyft both have invented a system whereby they can discriminate against riders. That is the simple truth. They can give you a rating. They can give you a rating for any reason onward, on earth. They don't like the perfume that you wear. They think that you're too slow getting into the car. They don't want to have dog hair in their car. And so they might give you a low rating for your service dog, even though the federal government says that's illegal. Oh, they've figured out a way to get around the federal government's ADA requirements. I am so opposed to working specifically with Uber. Uber is a company that's been banned from other cities for their bad practices. They're running advertisements right now with their new CEO saying, "I promise, I'm not a bad guy. I know our company has been horrible up till now and is facing all of these fines, but promise, we're gonna be good." No, there are systems that we're looking into, but subsidizing Uber with tax money? No, thank you.
All right, final question, number five. Barb, you start this one. What differentiates you from your opponent? What do you think is the most important distinction for voters to know?
Experience, experience. It's really weird to be a middle-aged woman and be running for politics, because when you are running for office, all you're doing is talking about how old you are, right? "I moved to town. When I moved to town..." All three of these folks were in middle school, wherever they were. They were, you know, that's how you could make these jokes about, "How old is she?" "When I moved to town, there were still logs in the river." "When I moved to town, measures fifty and five, who are still brand-new." "When I moved to town, there was no parkway." "When I'm so old, when I moved to town..." You know, ten years later came the Men Without Ties Revolution. I've been here through two of these boom in bus cycles. I've left town. I taught when I was teaching. It was out of town. It was over in Burns. And so I did. I got out at the biggest of the last boom, but here I am now. I have experience. I got onto city council because my husband and I, my neighbors and I, we fought and fought and fought with the darn city to get a speedboat on our street. We never did win. We never did win. But you know what we got? We got flashing signal on Highway Twenty there right by Pilot Bu. My neighbors and I made a whole lot of noise about that thing. I don't know if I get credit, but anyway, I have the experience of just plain living here, just plain reading the paper and working with people, for people, working in the service industry. You know, when you're a waitress or a bartender, you do. You're gonna talk to everybody. You hear what everybody thinks their problems are. And then I worked in construction. I mean, I know what it means to be an electrician who gets up every morning. I was an electrician, but I worked right next to him. Yeah, I worked with wood. You know, in the cold and the heat to build homes for people. They should be able to afford the homes that they are building. It's kinda like what Henry Ford said about his cars. The people who work in Bend should be able to afford to live in Bend.
All right, Sarah, two minutes, same question.
So I am a pretty normal citizen. I have a family. I've got two little boys, as I mentioned earlier. I'm not an activist. I don't go on corners and protest, and it's not because I don't believe... And it's not because I don't believe in anything. I think that in a small town, that kind of behavior can be really divisive. And, um, it's not, I mean, government is a slow-moving vehicle. And having people that are trying to work against what everybody's trying to accomplish, accomplish is not the best way to move something that's slow forward. Um, I was a teacher for a bit, I was a director of development at a school. I did a lot of fundraising, grant writing, um, different events, you name it. I've worked in the film industry for years, and I never got up to the big-time jobs. I always was the, the coffee grunt or the person helping with the sets. So, I mean, I, my body of work has been very eclectic, and, um, as Barb's has as well. And, uh, I, I did just move here last four years, but I came here as a kid a bunch, and I saw how Bend changed a lot. And, um, I'm looking at all of this with a fresh set of eyes. I'm not, I don't have grudges against anybody, I don't have an axe to grind, and I just want to learn from all of the great people here. And, um, I look forward to having meetings with different people in the business sector and neighborhood coalitions, and I, that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, one minute, Barb.
Um, Bend is just a weird place. Bend is a weird place. Our relationship with our Parks District is weird. Even in this, in this state of Oregon, a third of our citizens have no idea that we don't have a Parks Department. And then our own taxing limitations at the state are weird. We're one of the only states in the whole country that doesn't have a state, a sales tax. And so I really think, you're looking, I, I think you want someone who has some body of knowledge about the system within their work with, that they're working in. Um, my opponent, just a couple of minutes ago, said she thinks we need that infrastructure advisory committee to get electricity out to customers. City of Bend doesn't do electricity, that's not one of our jobs. We have no, we get franchise fees from the electric companies. But no, that's, that's just literally not us. I think you want somebody who's been here long enough to at least have some base of knowledge about the system.
Sarah, one minute.
I am learning. I, um, did not wake up and say, "I'd, I'd like to be a city councillor as a child." It's not, I, even going door-to-door, people are saying, "Are you crazy? Are you a glutton for pain? Why do you want to work for a city council?" And I, 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 I am learning everything. I'm new to all of this. And I'm so open to hearing from all of you and the experts in each field. And I'm not gonna make any decisions based on emotion. I want to load, um, I want to load my mind with knowledge before I make a decision. And part of that is gonna be by talking to the, each expert in their field.
Okay, time for closing arguments. Barb?
Uh, thank you again, and sincerely thank you to the Realtors, because I am, I'm a different voice than the Realtors. The simple fact is, the Realtors took down all their signs. I had a hard time finding the building today because it used to have all the signs of all the candidates they've already decided to support. Um, when my opponent says she didn't wake up one day and say, "I want to be on City Council," OrStar is the program for the state that shows you all of the money that's coming and going from candidates. I think OrStar agrees. It looks like Jenna's opponent and mine both got a signing bonus of $500 from one of the lobbying groups the day they signed up. My own opponent has gotten a check from the Realtors for $10,000 so far. Jenna's opponent has gotten two checks from the Realtors alone. One of them was for $10,000, the other was for 20. It's $30,000 from the Realt, from the lobbyists for the Realtors. Again, I know Realtors, I have friends, family who are Realtors. Realtors are not bad people, they're selling a product that other people need. But these lobbying organizations, they are doing a very specific thing in politics in our town. They are looking for voices, they are looking for someone to bring their voice to the table. Well, I would like to represent people who do not have $10,000 to put down on a candidate. They do not have the time to sit in our meetings. Their lobbyists sit in our meetings, every single meeting, every single time. There is a lobbyist who is paid to be there. He's a really nice guy. "Name's Tyler, and you know, I, I don't have..." But, you know, this is the fact, we have lobbyists working here in our city, and they are putting big, big money into this election. So I just think you, a lot of the information you need is right there, it's online. You can look at, who are they following? Who are their supporters? Who's paying for them to be there? Is that you?
All right, Sarah, two-minute closing remark.
So I need all the help I can get, and I'm not gonna shy away from any of the contributions I've had. I've been hitting up just about every one of my friends and family for contributions. And, uh, I agree with Barb, you should look online and read about my opponents. Rondo couldn't be here today because he is in jail. And Barb has been in feuds with a lot of different folks in town, whether it be the newspaper, her neighbors. Um, it's not a secret, so please, research my opponents. I don't have that much online about myself because I'm new to this. And so everything that you know about me, I have to tell you. I would like to see Bend grow smart. And, uh, part of that is going to be getting the right people on council to make the decisions, to make Bend grow in the right direction. And during the last UGB expansion, my opponent went to a legislative committee to speak against that expansion when the people of Bend were paying a lobbyist to help with that expansion. That kind of behavior is not gonna help us grow, and it's a waste of time and money because the expansion happened. But had it not, it would have been at the expense of the Bend taxpayer.
All right, is that it? Okay, now you can applaud for, be careful, these are very sensitive microphones, so you don't want to put it right next to your mouth or it'll make a lot of noise.
Hi, um, I've lived in Bend for over 20 years, and, uh, lived on the east side, on the other side of the railroad tracks. I've seen a lot of changes with Reed Market, but none of them have fixed the problem. The railroad track is a problem. My question is, um, what's the plan to make the east side more accessible? You know, are we gonna have overpasses or underpasses on Reed Market or Wilson? Someplace that we can go? Because right now, all the, all the, the only way we can go is Franklin or north, you know, and it's just, it's just impossible.
Is this question pointed to any one of the candidates?
Uh, Jenna?
Jenna?
So that's actually an issue I heard about specifically from people living in your neighborhood when I was out knocking on doors. And, um, and, and I can understand it, you know, making my way over there and getting caught, um, at the railroad tracks is really frustrating, especially when you have someplace you need to be. So totally understand the frustration. Um, those kinds of challenges are, are things that the, the city transportation advisory committee are going to be looking at for the long-range transportation plan. So, um, I'm hoping that as a council, we can address some of those. I think we also have to recognize, you know, the high cost of, of overpasses, um, and, and look at strategically where the best places to have those are. So, you know, we're building a new one in Murphy, and, um, but I would definitely take, you know, concerns specifically from people living in those neighborhoods into account to figure out where the best places to make that investment would be.
Oh, sorry. Having lived on that side for so many years, um, I wouldn't have chose Murphy. That wouldn't have been my first choice. And, um, it's not, it's not just that there's the train, it's that there's still so much more traffic because of the new bridge in the Old Mill. So I, you need to consider the whole impact of that whole area. Reed Market is immense, from site to site.
Any other candidate want to chime in on that?
I would if you don't mind. Um, you, uh, your opinion is shared by many, um, folks. Reed Market project was designed and floated to the voters by a different council. And they believed that the citizens just didn't want to have that bond measure be twice as much. That project was a bond measure that had to be approved by the voters. And going over those railroad tracks on Reed Market is almost impossible because of the canal and because of American Lane, and literally would have doubled the price of the entice. So they decided not to do it on Reed Market. So we are now looking at Murphy, because Murphy doesn't have those problems. It is possible to just get a bridge. Um, again, problems that past councils made, we're just trying to cope with now. Um, we completely agree, you've got to have a way to just get over those traps. Um, Sally Russell, who's running for mayor, thinks we might actually have an opportunity to move those darn switching yards. Because you're not just waiting for a train. How many of you know this? Train comes by, then it stops, and it backs up. Right? You know, I mean, that's the thing, right? So she honestly sees an opportunity. What if we could get that darn switching yard out of town? That would improve every single crossing in all of central Oregon. I'm with her 1,000% on that kind of an idea. Um, I would like to say, I kind of drive city staff crazy. Anytime anybody mentions Reed Market, I give them a hard time about the landscaping, which is not done, still looks like crap. I will not tolerate that. I live on the east side myself, I'm not, you know, this is one of those, "Oh, if you don't reelect me, I'll still be there at council yelling about the landscaping." We do have the money in the bank, they just stuck with it. But either way, um, we hope to do better in the future. But it, it involves money. Again, it's all your money, there's no magical money out there. If you want to get over the railroad tracks, you've got to pay for an overcrossing. And that's the really painful part that people don't want to take on, sometimes, some people. And I love that you said the new bridge, that's how I think of it, too. It's that new bridge that was built 15 years ago, right?
Sarah, you want to add anything to this one?
Sure, I was just gonna say that I totally agree with you, something needs to be done. I had a meeting with the chief of police, and he was saying that it's, uh, it's a huge issue for first responders. They cannot get to folks if there is a train in the way. And, um, I think that to push, um, a Reed Market bridge or overpass, to push that forward, we have to really highlight that if, this is a, um, this is a, it could be a medical issue if somebody needed assistance on the other side of the tracks.
Heather?
I would just add, so on. I would just add quickly, uh, that I think, in terms of long-range planning, I think the city of Bend needs to have a really serious conversation about the east-west bypass. Uh, you know, I lived through the Parkway implementation as a child and remember the consternation that that caused for our community, but I can't imagine the landscape of Bend without it. And I think 20 years from now, at the rate we're growing, if we aren't having a conversation about how, how big traffic east-west, that that would be, uh, much to our disadvantage. So I would just add that in, I think that's pretty critical for our, our future development.
All right, thank you. We're only, uh, because of time constraints, I think we're only gonna have one more question, so... So I'll let Tyler be the bad guy and choose which one of you gets to ask.
Thank you. Thank you for running for office, for starters. I know it's a big deal, and thanks for caring about our community. Um, I, um, also want to thank you for being mostly very respectful of each other up there. I do have one question. I, it really struck me a little bit, um, when you were talking about activists being very divisive and having that be very divisive behavior. And I guess I just, I want to ask you, Sarah, if you were elected to City Council, will you also listen to those people when they come to council and have a question?
Oh, absolutely. And, um, also, I mean, to be an activist, you have to have a lot of passion. And Barb here has a lot of passion, she cares, there's no doubt about it. She really cares about the city of Bend. And anybody who is willing to take time off work, or skip a shift, or get out there in the rain, sleet, snow, I've seen them in all weather on the corner protesting. And, um, they do have a voice. And I just think that sometimes the message gets lost in, um, in that kind of display. I mean, I, it, it sometimes turns into more theatrics than it is getting the message across.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you'll listen to them, because activist, I think, has become a dirty word. And really, it's just a label for people who care about maybe things that you don't care about, or Jenna doesn't care about, or Barb doesn't care about, or Andrew. So, um, thank you.
Andrew, you want to take this one off?
I, I don't know if she wanted to hear from me. But I'm happy to talk, as every good politician is.
The rest of you, I think, kind of made clear that you want to listen to them. But I'd love to hear what everybody else wants to say.
Yeah, um, part of my day job is listening to people who have viewpoints that are really different from mine. For me, that's a piece of the lens that I would bring to City Council. Uh, it, one of the things that I do in my eight-to-five job is I handle student conduct. And let me just tell you that no one is ever satisfied when they come to the student conduct office. Uh, either the student is happy, often the parents or the faculty member is unhappy. If the parents are happy, that means the student's unhappy. It's a very complicated system. Everybody has a really distinct viewpoint. And it's my job to listen to all those viewpoints, take all that information, and still try to make a decision that makes the community as whole as possible, and also gives that person an opportunity to learn. And I think I would bring the same, uh, type of leadership to our City Council that would be all about. Um, for me, it comes down to not listening just to what people are saying, but listen, uh, and ask the appropriate probing questions to get down to their values. Because I actually think that the values that separate most of us in our community are, um, they're, they're not so broad. I think we care passionately about a lot of the exact same things, whether that be our families, or, you know, those hierarchy of needs in terms of being able to afford food and housing and, and those kinds of things. And so when we can get on the same page values-wise, oftentimes, we're far more amenable to understanding how to create solutions. And they might not be exactly the solutions that I have in my head or the solutions that someone else has in their head, but they're often far better when we start with that values piece, and then say, "What are we building for mayor?" That would be the approach I would take.
Barb?
Uh, sure. Uh, you know, the activism thing is something I discuss with the city manager sometimes. It seems to me that we currently have a councillor who just doesn't like government. He just votes no on everything, even if that no vote might have resulted in our being sued, might result in our just completely grinding to a halt. He was chairman of our Metropolitan Planning Organization, managed to practically grind that thing to a halt in a year, saying we had to rewrite the rules, and after we rewrote the rules, then we could talk about the goals, blah, 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 blah. And this is what I always say to our city manager. It seems to me that if you have such a problem with the thing, that you just want it to stop, you want to grind that thing into a halt. You think it's bad, you think it needs to turn a direction. The place for you is on a street corner with me, with a great big sign. The place for you is in the park with me, sending 150 postcards saying, "Don't take Obamacare away." But if you are someone who wants to try and help manage the system that is there, that's when you run for office. And that's what I have done. And I try, I think about this all the time, of, is my national activism actually in conflict with my job as city councillor? And I think hard about that. And I try to make sure that I'm doing both of those things the best that I can. But they absolutely do intersect. Our federal policy on immigration affects our own citizens and our own law enforcement agents. Our federal policy on trade affects whether we can afford ever to build an, an overpass over the railroad tracks. I mean, we're hoping for one right now. These do affect us. And to think that you can just keep your head in the sand and never read the national news, and it's not gonna affect local, I just don't think that works.
Well, I really appreciate everyone's time, so I want to be very brief here in just saying that, um, activism does not need to be divisive. We have a lot of passionate people in our community who are advocating for issues or concerns that are impacting them personally. And it doesn't need to be divisive, because if we have leaders who are willing to listen to everybody, and really listen hard for what those ideas are that people are bringing to the table, that people want to see change on. If we have leaders who are listening to those ideas and figuring out, how can we fit all of those ideas together in a package that's going to solve a lot of our problems in our community and make everyone happy? It doesn't need to be divisive. and make everyone happy, it doesn't need to be divisive. So as our city councillor, I would be really excited to, to be one of those leaders for Bend and to help us move past some of these divisive arguments.
All right, well, I think you will all agree, it takes a very special person to give up his or her entire Wednesday night for very low pay and a sack lunch. So you should all be commended for that.
We get lunch.
It's part of the game. They didn't tell you? All right, uh, please rise when I call your name. Andrew Davis, Sarah McCormick, Barb Campbell, Jenna Goodman Campbell. No religion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee.
Oh, you're welcome. My pleasure, my pleasure. Uh, our next debate will be the one for Redmond Baron City Council there in Redmond, and that takes place on October 11th at Gino's Italian Grill in Redmond.